This free program starts this fall semester.
And it's LA high school students graduating in June who'll be able to take advantage first. The program called America's College Promise was launched by former President Barack Obama.
It really starts to change their way of thinking about themselves, about their community, and about their options for the future.
In the audience undergrads from Eagle Rock, Marshall, and Highland Park High. School officials and alumni encouraging them to go to college and pursue their dreams. And starting this fall at a discount.
Just keep pushing forward like through the fear and even if it seems overwhelming, you can definitely do it. We're all up here examples that it can be done.
Many of the soon to be high school grads already know they're going to college.
Everyone in here is capable to reach above and beyond, to reach for the skies.
Education is the passport to the future. For tomorrow belongs to those who prepare for it today.
Don't let anything step in the way of you and your dreams. And no matter what, give it your all.
Words to live by. In Highland Park, I'm Gil Reyes. LA this week.
The office of Mayor Garcetti raised nearly $2 million to pay for at least half the cost of the program's first year. The eventual goal is to provide free community college for all. More than 500 teachers are signing on to get art back in the schools through a project with the Getty Foundation and the LA Promise Fund. Anna Marcos has more on the debut party at Alvera Street.
So get some Michelob's in you, man. Get warmed up. Let's have a good time. And it's all about art tonight, right?
This is an invitation for LA schoolteachers to knock back a drink, have a popsicle, grab some guacamole, and sign up to spread art. In this case, Latino art in the schools.
And then they'll be able to put some lesson plans together so that they can bring the art into their classrooms.
The Getty Foundation has teamed up with LA schoolteachers and the LA Promise Fund for its new project, Pacific Standard Time LA LA, which opens in California museums in the fall. It's an exhibit on the work of Latino and Latin American artists.
People think they may know, or they may think they know Latin American and Latino art, and their minds will be blown by the variety of art that they'll, that will be on view. So they'll get a greater understanding of the cultural heritage that really is, you know, more than 50% of the population traces its roots to Latin America.
To get students and teachers connected to art, Getty organizers are handing out grants to pay for teacher training and museum field trips. There's also grant money for an art challenge where students create their own works of art.
Students all across Southern California will get the opportunity to see artworks that reflect themselves.
I'm the burnt skid marks left at the crossroad, the corners where the homies once stood.
A little spoken word, just another outlet for creativity. These teachers are soaking in the vibe as they get ready to put art back into the three Rs. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
Organizers estimate only about 3% of class time in LA schools is spent on teaching creative arts. Well, turning now to a lesson on the environment, volunteers have finished planting hundreds of trees to replace hundreds of others killed off during years of drought. Gil Reyes reports on this long-term investment in Elysian Park.
These volunteers believe one day, all this hard work will pay off.
A lot of steps to remember and trying to dig up the hole in dirt. This looks pretty tough, but I can do it.
Volunteers planting more trees today in Elysian Park. It's the last in a series of plantings sponsored by the company Boise Paper and led by the city's tree planting campaign known as City Plants.
325 trees total through three different plantings that we started in the fall, but we've lost hundreds of trees in Elysian Park because of this drought over the past several years.
So Councilman Micho Farrell says it's important to replace the trees we've lost for scenery, shading, and for the survival of area wildlife in the city's oldest park. Planters in Elysian Park are testing out a relatively new technique using biodegradable boxes, also known as landlife cocoons. Filled with water, sealed, and then buried with the tree roots, these extra steps are believed to greatly increase a tree's chances of survival. Protective mesh is also buried to ward off any gophers.
Our patients will be rewarded and our kids will have a greener city than the one that we received.
We shall see when these eucalyptus, peppermint gum, pine, and desert willow trees reach maturity in about 15 to 30 years. In Elysian Park, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
The German company that makes landlife cocoons says they can increase a tree's survival rate by as much as 95%. From planting trees in the community to planting trees in your backyard, the city is giving residents in Sherman Oaks free trees to help keep the planet green. Anna Marcos shows us what it's all about.
Springtime is definitely in the air in Sherman Oaks as the Say Hello to Spring Tree Giveaway hands out 250 baby plants so residents can plant fruit and shade trees in their own yards.
Oh, I'm gonna do it totally. I'm just gonna like dig a hole with my dad and then we're just gonna put it into the ground.
Well, what about me?
And water it every day. I'm gonna help too.
Actually Carmen, the woman who works at the post office when she was delivering mail said, hey, they're giving out free trees down in the park. So my roommate and I came down and adopted one.
I think it's a great event. It's like welcoming the spring, this beautiful weather, and it's great having the community come out here, get a tree.
The Tree Giveaway is a joint effort by the city, the Department of Water and Power, the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council, and City Plants. The city holds about 100 of these events a year, handing out 20,000 trees, a win-win for residents and for Mother Earth.
And we really do care about the environment and conservation. And we're anxious for people to plant trees.
Well, a young tree like the ones that we're giving away today will use about 15 gallons of water a week. And that is about the amount of one five-minute shower. It's actually a really great way to keep your yard green. Trees have a life cycle just like everything else. And a lot of LA's beautiful older trees are actually getting to a point where they're starting to pass away due to old age. So it's really, really important that we continue to plant new trees.
In return, residents get shade, beauty, and a better and cleaner planet. And it all starts with a tiny one of these. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
Residents at the event also got free mulch and free rain barrels, as well as other water and power conservation gadgets. Well, new rules for the LAPD as officials attempt to reduce use of force confrontations. The city helps residents clean out their garage and protect the environment at the same time. And city officials encourage folks to be prepared in case of a disaster. All these stories in City B. The Los Angeles Board of Police Commissioners approved new policies that call on officers to use more de-escalation techniques before resorting to deadly force. The changes come amid a heightened focus on police shootings, both in LA and across the country, as the commission has worked to decrease the number of deadly encounters between officers and the public. One of the changes states that officers shall attempt to control an incident by using time, distance, communications, and available resources in an effort to de-escalate the situation whenever it is safe and reasonable to do so. Police Chief Charlie Beck voiced support for the policy change, which he said was negotiated with the Los Angeles Police Protective League, the union representing rank-and-file officers. Union leaders had voiced concern over the changes when they were first brought forward. Council District One and LA Sanitation hosted an oil recycling and collection event at the Montecito Heights Recreation Center. The city holds these events in different areas several times a year as a service to the community. Folks were able to drop off old TVs, computers, cell phones, used motor oil, oil filters, and old paint.
There's nowhere to throw it away, and you shouldn't be putting it into your drains, and you shouldn't be putting it down your sink. You should drop it off somewhere where people can take care of it.
An emergency preparedness expo was held recently in Century City. The expo featured vendor tables with information about keeping safe during disasters. Officials from the Los Angeles Fire and Police Departments, along with the American Red Cross and Community Emergency Response Teams, or CERT, were on hand providing information on how folks can prepare and become trained to handle a disaster.
Because in the event of a large-scale emergency like an earthquake, people need to realize that we're not there for them. We're gonna be busy taking care of the big stuff, and you have to learn to take care of yourself.
Because again, you know, always be prepared for something to happen, earthquake or disaster, you know, make sure that you have clothing, you know, additional food or whatever in your car. Let people know where you're at at all times.
Step by step, Angelenos are working to reduce our need for imported water. The latest creation, so-called rain gardens in South LA. Anna Marcos shows us what they're all about.
One, two.
And just like that, with a shovel full of dirt, a new rain garden is born. The University Park Neighborhood Rain Gardens Project helps capture more water for a thirsty city, and it will help make this corner of South LA a little greener and more sustainable.
It also is an opportunity for us to join sidewalk repair with water conservation. And what they do is help us prepare our city for the future so that we can capture the water that we do get.
The so-called rain gardens are planters built into the curbside which grow native grasses and plants. They help redirect stormwater runoff from the street and allow it to seep into the ground, to be cleaned and filtered by plants and soil. Then it seeps back into the water table.
The two areas that are most opportune for doing green infrastructure are the Northeast Valley and South LA. That's because both of these areas are geographically located above our groundwater basins. And so we can actually do infiltration in those areas.
And what you see here before you today is a great example of how we're gonna transform our relationship with water.
For the neighbors, added bonuses, a more beautiful street, and a better quality of life.
We get to see the neighborhood start improving bit by bit, and we like it.
The young school kids that walk past every day, we can talk to them about how to save the community because they're the next generation of kids, the young people that's gonna grow up.
And the greening of the streets is about to spread. City leaders will build 35 of these rain gardens in South LA. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
Head out for a fishing trip in the city. A lineup of puppets takes center stage at the Skirball, and Asian filmmakers show off their cinematic skills. All this and this week's things to do. Get your kids hooked on fishing at the Lincoln Park Youth Fishing Derby. Fishing rods, reels, tackle, and bait will all be provided if you don't have your own. The event is free for kids 15 and younger. The Youth Fishing Derby takes place at Lincoln Park Lake on April 29th from 8:00 AM to noon. The park is located at 3501 Valley Boulevard. Celebrate the art of puppetry and the power of stories at the Skirball's annual Puppet Festival, featuring new and classic tales told with a delightful array of puppets, live music, and art-making. This campus-wide, day-long festival brings together talented puppeteers and artists working in a range of cultural and artistic styles, from shadow puppets to giant pageant puppets. A day of imaginative storytelling is sure to amaze visitors ages 2 to 102. Don't miss this special festival finale performed by Noah's Ark storytellers and puppeteers. It all takes place on Sunday, April 30th from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. For more, visit skirball.org. The 33rd Los Angeles Asian Pacific Film Festival kicks into high gear. Since 1983, the festival has presented nearly 5,000 films, videos, and digital media works by Asian international and Asian Pacific American artists. And additionally, features seminars and panels, in-person guest appearances, and filmmaker awards. The festival continues to be the largest festival of its kind in Southern California and is the premier showcase for the best and brightest of Asian Pacific American and international cinema. It all takes place April 27th through May 4th. For more, visit festival.vconline.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at LA this week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at la city view dot org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
Good morning, good morning. It is Tuesday. Shhh. It is Tuesday, April 25th. I want to welcome you to the Los Angeles City Council. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll so we can get started.
Bloomingfield, Panenbuskain, Osidio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weiser Keretz, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue Wesson, 11 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Krikorian moves. Harris Dawson seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. O'Farrell moves. Ms. Martinez seconds. Next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Let's all rise for our flag salute. Will be led today by Mr. Bloomingfield.
Thank you. Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield. Let's begin to go through the agenda. Madam Clerk, if you would.
Mr. President, there are request to continue items. Item 19 and 45, one week to May 2nd.
Without objection.
Items 1A and 1L for two weeks to May 9th.
Without objection.
And 1G for 30 days to May 24th.
So be it. Next.
Further, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that the following items be received and filed as the liens have been paid in full. 1E, F, H, N, and Q.
So, thank you. So without objection, that'll be the order. Continue.
Items 1 through 5 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards?
Yes, there are cards on 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Okay, then let's hold those items. And vote, Mr. Harris Dawson.
I'd like to call number 37 special.
We'll get there. We're not there yet. Make a note. So let's vote on item 5, I guess. Let's open the roll. Close the roll to have you late to vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, continue.
So let's hold item thirty-seven. Mister Englander?
And item nineteen to be continued for a week, please.
I will hold seven, nineteen till May second. Okay, continue. Any other, oh, Mister Keretz.
Thank you, Mister President. I'd like to continue item twenty-four to May third.
Item twenty-four, May third. Mister O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mister President. Receive and file item twenty-seven.
You have that, Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Continue.
For the record, that is twelve ayes.
Okay, yeah, Mister Price. All right.
And Mister President, there is a request to send item thirty-eight forthwith.
Without objection. Ms. Martinez? Go ahead.
No, that was it. She did thirty-eight.
Items forty-two through fifty-six are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Mister Osidio has arrived. Okay. Do we have cards?
Yes, sir, cards on all items.
All right, continue.
Mister President, that takes council back to presentations. Our items called special.
Okay. Okay, so I want to recognize Mister Bloomingfield and Mister Keretz to see if you guys are ready for our presentation of the day. If so, the floor is yours.
Colleagues, this morning-
Could you hold on one second? Just one second. Let's, a quick vote. It's a request on item thirty-eight to be sent forthwith. Urgent forthwith. So we need to vote on that. Urgent forthwith. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, Mister Keretz?
Thank you, Mister President. This morning, we're commemorating Yom HaShoa, or Holocaust Remembrance Day, which began Sunday evening and ended last night. Each year, on the twenty-seventh day of Nisan, a two-minute siren is sounded throughout Israel, and the entire state of Israel comes to a complete halt. On Yom HaShoa, the six million Jews annihilated by Hitler are remembered. And I think back to my own family. My father was a survivor, but he lost his sister and many other family members. And he never even, even to the moment when he passed, over thirty years after the end of the Holocaust, he was never able to talk about it. He never even spoke the name of his sister to me. And I just, a couple of years ago, had to dig that out through some ancestry research. It was that raw thirty years after. And so, Yom HaShoa gives us an opportunity to recall those who came before us and to consider the meaning of Judaism in our lives and to adhere to the prophetic mandate of our ancestors. On this day, we advocate for ourselves and others, as well as the past, the present, and the future. With individual and collective effort, on this day and every day, we can preserve the memory of what was lost and rediscover the light of Judaism, which burns much like a light in the yard side candle. Now, I have the honor of introducing Henry Sluky. After Nazi Germany's initial occupation of France, Henry and his family resettled to the South, where they remained until nineteen forty-two. That year, Nazi Germany invaded the whole country, and Henry's family escaped through the Pyrenees. And they made this dangerous journey on foot and eventually made their way to Barcelona, Spain. From Barcelona, Henry's parents made the difficult decision to send him to the United States by himself as part of First Lady Eleanor Roosevelt's initiative to save refugee children. After the war, he moved to Los Angeles. Colleagues, please welcome Henry Sluky.
Thank you very much for the honor you extend me to speak here today as a Holocaust survivor and to participate in commemorating those tragic years. My name is Henry Sluky. I was born in Paris, France, on July twelfth, nineteen thirty-four. I must begin by clearly stating that we survivors of the Holocaust owe our lives and are here today to tell our stories only because there were rescuers who helped us in many ways. Had there been no rescuers, there would be no survivors. The lesson learned is that when faced by perpetrators of injustice, we must do what is morally right. None of us can afford to be a collaborator or simply a bystander. It behooves us to actively participate and help, even if our safety or our lives are at risk. Pastor Niemoller in Germany was a resister against Hitler, incarcerated in Dachau. After the war, he reminded the world that, and of course, the famous words, first they came for, and it was trade unionists, it was the communists, it was the Jews, the Catholics, et cetera. And he didn't speak up because he was not in any one of those categories. When it was his turn, when they came to get him, there was no one left to speak for him. Today, throughout the world and in our own country, there is a need to speak out, especially since the number of survivors is dwindling down very rapidly. Clear, I clearly remember standing on the Paris sidewalk on the morning of June twelfth, nineteen forty, with relatives as we joined thousands of curious Parisians to watch regiment after regiment of occupying German soldiers straggling in a somewhat coordinated fashion. Two days later, the French government signed an armistice with Hitler, and my father, who had volunteered in the French Army, was demobilized. My mother and I, as you heard, traveled south and joined him in Vichy, France, where we resided for the next two years. At six o'clock in the morning on August twenty-sixth, nineteen forty-two, French gendarme knocked on our front door as part of the roundups to deport Jews to Auschwitz. My parents awoke me quietly and whispered that there were some people knocking on the door, but we were going to be very quiet and pretend that we are not at home. The gendarme knocked on the door for an hour and a half and then finally left. And when they left, we were hidden by our landlords on their farm. After the Germans occupied all of France on Armistice Day forty-two, my parents and I, with the aid of Spanish refugees in exile, crossed the Pyrenees on foot over five nights and escaped to Spain. Ten months later, I was on my way to America without my parents, thanks to a special program that Eleanor Roosevelt established modeled after the British Kindertrance vol. On September twentieth, nineteen forty-three, I left my parents in Barcelona with a child, with a ten-child convoy chaperoned by adults from the American Joint Distribution Committee. We boarded the Portuguese ship Serpapinto in Lisbon and arrived in Philadelphia on October thirteenth. Through the New York Foster Care Agency, we were put up in Jewish homes in the United States, and I fortunately had a great aunt and great uncle living in Washington Heights in New York City, with whom I then lived for the next two and a half years. In nineteen forty-six, my parents and I were reunited in New York City. We then subsequently moved to Los Angeles in nineteen forty-nine, so I consider myself a forty-niner, where I completed my education graduating from Woodrow Wilson High School and then UCLA and Columbia University. Since nineteen sixty-three, I continue to be a professor of behavioral sciences at the University of Southern California Keck School of Medicine. Thank you very much.
Wow, that was an amazing story. Thank you so much for sharing it. Deeply moving to learn about, and especially today, Yom HaShoa, which is Holocaust Memorial Day, and it's a day that we remember the souls that were lost and the heroism of those who fought back. Hearing a story like that makes you realize, not only do we have to remember and never forget, but we also have to be vigilant. And I think it's incumbent upon us, especially now, given the rhetoric that has been out in this country, that has just been turned up with the presidential campaign in these last several months, that we heed the warning of those stories. Because don't think it can't happen again, and don't think it can't happen to us, for any type of group, not just Jews, but even with Jewish issues. This last year, we've seen cemetery desecrations, children evacuated from Jewish community centers, a forty-five percent spike in anti-Jewish incidents across America's elite campuses. We've seen this pernicious BDS movement try to move to make antisemitism acceptable by equating it with anti-Zionism. We've seen this rise in antisemitism. It's palpable, but it hasn't just been that. It's been a, it's been a rise in rhetoric about all different ethnicities. And it's something that a day like today is a day that we need to take stock, remember what happened in the past, hear the stories of folks who lived through that, and say to ourselves, we are going to take action. We're not going to stand for the little things that are going to lead up to the bigger things. Because make no mistake about it, the past can repeat itself if we're not aware. Now, it's my pleasure today, I get to introduce someone, Rabbi Hayyim Baruch Rubin. Yes, he was born in New York City to parents who had survived the enormous suffering of the Holocaust. His father, Rabbi Abraham Rubin, settled in Los Angeles, striving to make a living and to rebuild their lives. He led a congregation in Boyle Heights and later established congregation Etz Chaim to serve the growing Orthodox population in Hancock Park. This congregation was a legacy and a living memorial to his family, his synagogue and his community that had been destroyed and wiped out by the Holocaust. Now, the son continues his father's legacy as the rabbi of congregation Etz Chaim, which is today a thriving center for Jewish life in Los Angeles. Rabbi is married, has seven children, over thirty grandchildren, seven great-grandchildren, each one a testament to the eternity of the Jewish people. I want to thank the rabbi for joining us here today to share your story as well and for all of your work in the community, ensuring that our youth are remembered, that the youth remember the past and build toward a tolerant and peaceful future. And we are very grateful for the work that you do every day to promote that, and are especially grateful that you're joining us on this solemn occasion, Yom HaShoa. So please, Rabbi.
Thank you so very much, Councilman Bloomingfield. Also want to acknowledge and thank my dear friend, Councilman Keretz. Mister President and esteemed members of the council, thank you for allowing me to address you today. Today, as you've heard, is the Holocaust Memorial Day. It's a day to remember, it's a day to mourn, it's a day to pay respects, it's a day to show admiration, and a day to give thanks. We want to remember the six million Jews, innocent Jews, that were tortured and slaughtered by the horrific Nazi regime. We want to mourn their deaths. We want to pay respect to their souls. We want to show our admiration to our survivors. And we want to give thanks to our liberators. Personally, for me, today is a day of mixed emotions. It's a day to remember the horrific events in human history that happened to my family, to my parents. I'm the son of a Holocaust survivors who endured unspeakable torture, humiliation, and suffering. They, along with other Holocaust survivors, found their way to this great country, a country that guaranteed their freedom and gave them the opportunity to rebuild their Jewish life wherever they settled, so that it indeed a day to remember with sadness, but also a day to give thanks. But today is not just a day to commemorate. It's not just a day for ceremonies. Today is a day where we must make a commitment, that such unspeakable and unimaginable horror should never, ever be allowed to raise its head again. What are the lessons to be learned? We must learn the importance of speaking out forcefully and unequivocally, and take action against any intolerance and bigotry and discrimination whatsoever, and wherever it occurs. If the world is to change, we must act. If we see injustice, we must demand justice. If we see evil, we must confront it and eliminate it. Especially today, just a few decades since the end of the Nazi regime, antisemitism, as we've heard from Councilman Bloomingfield, is raising its ugly head all over the world. And even here in the United States, we are witnessing a steady rise in antisemitic incidents. We must dedicate ourselves and stand up and oppose loudly and clearly that we, as a society, will never, ever allow such bigotry and intolerance to exist. And it wasn't only the Jews who were systematically murdered. It was millions of non-Jews, Poles, Russians, the mentally and physically disabled, political opponents, homosexuals, and anyone of another race were all murdered under the relentless Nazi killing machine. As we heard from Henry, as he related, the memories of a simple citizen witnessing the insanity around him. "In Germany, they first came for the communists, and I didn't speak up because I wasn't a communist. Then they came for the Jews, and I didn't speak up because I wasn't a Jew. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I didn't speak up because they weren't, I wasn't a trade unionist. Then they came for the Catholics, and I didn't speak up because I was Protestant. Then they came for me, and by that time, no one was left to speak up." Let us dedicate ourselves to never allow evil to triumph. Throughout history, it has been the inaction of those who could have acted, the indifference for those who should have known better, the silence of the voice of justice when it mattered most that made it possible for evil to triumph. A few weeks ago, we sat down at a seder commemorating the Passover holiday, celebrating freedom from slavery, and part of the agoda that we recite, "Shab chol dor v'dor, oym dimalenu lechav esenu," that in every generation, there are those evil people that want to annihilate us. But with the help of the Almighty God, with the help of good people, moral people, compassionate people, they rise up and save us from that evil. As I conclude, I want to thank you. I want to bless you. God grant you the strength, the courage, the wisdom to conduct the enormous difficult job that you have, and to continue to protect us- job that you have and to continue to protect us so that we can all enjoy the life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness so guaranteed to us. May God bless you and may God bless the United States of America. Thank you.
Well, thank you to my colleague Bob Blumenfield, Mr. Henry Slukie, and Rabbi Rubin. And now, I'd like to ask...
Mr. Corretts, I have a couple of members, myself, to start before I call on Mr. Englander. Rabbi, I could just, where it relates to you and your story, God is good. Thirty grandchildren, what a blessing. I have three.
Seven great-grandchildren.
Thirty grandchildren and seven great-grandchildren. It just shows that we cannot be stopped. And so, it's just, God, I am so jealous. I have three. I'll borrow some of yours anytime. But I want to thank...
This is a lady responsible.
Thank you. Hey, let's give her a round of applause. And I want to say, your story was riveting and so was our young brother born in France, that to hear your story, to sit silently for an hour and a half, to walk for five days, to cross mountains, to successfully get into Spain, from there to come to this country alone for a few years, you are one of the lucky ones. And we, we are blessed because you shared your story with us. So again, this is a special day, and I want to just personally thank all of you. With that said, I'd like to recognize Mr. Englander.
Thank you. And it's another Jewish member of this council, I want to speak on this as well, as I did at Temple Ramazzion on Sunday. I've actually always had a problem with having a day of remembrance. A day, really, a day. Not even a month of remembrance, but a day to start. I think we have to remember every day what we've sacrificed and lost. In looking at and hearing all of the dialogue that comes out of a day of remembrance, we also have to think about what we walked away with, not just what we've lost. What made us stronger as a people? What brought us together? What created the perseverance, the will to survive, to reunite, to rebuild? What it's done to the Jewish people and to all of society to be more humane towards others, particularly now today more than ever, with a lot that's happening, not just internationally, not just nationally, but even locally. We've got to change that narrative and the dialogue to help each other, to help everyone. With so many people, and we're reminded, and I think it's fitting, that this week we start the city budget. And the city budget isn't just numbers on a page, it's a set of priorities. And there's a lot of funding to help homelessness, that the people of Los Angeles stepped up and said, we need to do more. These are people that are living in their own hell, that have gone through so much as well, many of ours, all being each other. So we need to walk away with lessons learned, but we need to help each other and do more. And that's a lot of what this is about, too. And so, I am reminded as a child, looking through all the memories of going to Hebrew school and watching the films, and looking at the images of what's happened that will forever be burned in my memory. Not only do we have to make sure that this never happens again to anybody, we've got to do more. We've got to reach out and help each other because there are many that are living in their own hell and not necessarily by their choosing and not because of somebody else. There's certainly enough hatred, unfortunately, to go around. And I want to thank you so much for sharing your stories and inspiring us for another day. We need to do more than another day. We need to live every day beyond what we can do to help each other. Thank you. God bless you.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you all for your... Thank you for bringing us together to remember. Thank you for your stories, which are in equal measures, shocking, disturbing, moving, and inspiring. It's hard to balance the emotions, as you say, Rabbi, and to try to find an appropriate human reaction to hearing stories like this. And I think, I think all of us run a real risk when we think about anything that's happened in history. We run the risk that anything that happened before we were born or before our own personal memory begins fades into a homogeneous amalgam of the things that happened before. And whether it happened in the 1940s or in the Roman Empire, it's something happened at a different time, before me, before I needed to be concerned. And I remember the first time I traveled to Europe, visiting ancient, all the antiquities and ancient places of Europe, and then going to Mauthausen. And of course, I knew about the Holocaust, as we all know about the Holocaust, while all of us take it into our hearts, having learned this in school and in popular culture, that it always seems in the past. It always seems, it's seen in black and white pictures, it's seen as the past. But when I went to Mauthausen, after seeing all these antiquities, I walked in and saw that the barbed wire on the fences was not even rusted. And it just struck me at that moment that this might as well have happened yesterday. It might as well have happened today. And for those of you who experienced this, it did. So your message about our need to realize that the Holocaust is not a thing of the past, but it's a reminder of the threats that everyone in the world faces if we don't stand up to intolerance and bigotry and extremism and hatred and autocracy, all of which are on the march right now throughout the world, all of which are finding fertile soil in which to root. And I think it's especially important this year more than ever that you remind us of this and that you remind us again of the, in immortal words, of Martin Niemuller, who reminded us that we are really all in this together. And I just want to cite to a similar quote that happened about a generation earlier during the occurrence of the Armenian genocide. And I was so proud to be joined by my brother Paul Corretts as we commemorated the Armenian genocide yesterday and Mr. Ru as well at Pan Pacific Park. As the slaughter of the Armenians was commencing in 1915, the ambassador of the United States to the Ottoman Empire was a Jew, Henry Morgenthau, a courageous man who confronted the dictators of the Ottoman Empire and made an appointment to visit Talat Pasha, the architect of the Armenian genocide, and expressed his outrage and expressed that the United States would not tolerate these actions. And Talat Pasha essentially waved it off and said, Ambassador Morgenthau, why should you care about these Armenians? You're a Jew, they're Christians. And Ambassador Morgenthau courageously told this man, I come to you, yes, I am a Jew, but I come to you as the ambassador of the United States of America, and I appeal to you, not on behalf of any race or any religion, but merely as a human being. And that sentiment, I think, was echoed again by Pastor Niemuller, and it needs to be remembered by all of us today, that, as Dr. King said, an injustice, an injustice, a threat to justice anywhere, an injustice anywhere is a threat to... I knew I'd foul that out. An injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. And that's certainly true when it comes to the most extreme of injustices, the most extreme kind of evil, the reoccurrence of genocide. And as we've proclaimed never again, time and time again since the end of the Holocaust, we know that again and again and again, the lessons have repeated themselves as we've had recurrences. So once and for all, when we, you know, approach this as human beings, perhaps once we can all join together and in truth know that when we say never again, it will in fact be never again, and we will have a world free of genocide. So thank you very much all for being here.
Mr. Ru.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to stand in solidarity and support to my colleagues, Councilmember Paul Corretts and Councilmember Bob Blumenfield, and the Jewish community in remembrance of the Holocaust. I also want to recognize and thank my rabbi, my favorite rabbi, Rabbi Rubin, for always giving an amazing talk and amazing stories. And of course, our community there, Stan Tritel, thank you so very much for being a guide and always doing this. And, you know, I just really want to thank the Jewish-American community for always stepping up. It's important that we remember the Holocaust, but it's not just remembering the Holocaust, but whenever there's injustice anywhere in the world, especially in trying times like today, the Jewish community is always the first to step up and speak up. So I really thank you for that. And, you know, I recently went to a bar mitzvah at Ikar, Ikar, and the young adult who was being bar mitzvahed talked about, he gave a little sermon. And he was talking about how it's difficult times, dark times, and he said, he started it by saying he really acknowledged it and liked the fact that it was dark times. And it was a little scary because you're like, oh, where's this young man going towards? And he said, because only in times of darkness can you see a candle, a single candle could get rid of all the darkness. And it's an opportunity for us to rise and come together and show that light can overcome dark. Even a single candle, no matter how pitch black it is, a single candle could make all the difference in the world. So he said how this is an opportunity for us to all come together and to stand up and rise and for the greater humanity to show what we're really made of. So it was an amazing sermon that he gave, and he preached it, and we all thought that he's going to become a rabbi. But it was amazing to witness, and thank you so much to all the leaders here today and to our fellow colleagues for bringing this today. Thank you.
Mr. Sadea.
Briefly, colleagues, let me follow the eloquence of the morning. I want to thank you for being here and for impressing upon us the lesson of our duty to remember history. And those of us who fail to remember history may be doomed for it to repeat. These are special stories that have to be told, and I thank you and I want to honor you for sharing with us. Bob, you are right, these are scary times in our nation. FBI reports will tell us that when hate speech is up, it is quickly followed by hate crimes. And we need to keep that in mind. We have an administration that deals with alternative facts. We have an administration that is advised by the likes of Stephen Bannon, Chris Korbeck, and Jeff Sessions. These are scary times for our nation, and we should be ever vigilant. I want to share with you what's distressing me these days. I have been running a, coordinating a series of immigration workshops to talk about what is taking place. And I spoke about this recently at the Anti-Defamation League Dinner. We're having these workshops to inform people about their rights and what should take place. And there are immigration raids that have been taking place in my district and in our community. People are being taken from courthouses, who are there to engage in their business, and parents are being taken from their children as they drop them off to school. I sat last Thursday in one of these meetings and was both distressed, heartbroken, it was gut-wrenching to listen to people being told that their children should get passports. Get passports for the moment that their parents may be deported, this way they can go back and forth to go see them. That they should be signing off on power of attorney for the inevitability for when they would be deported and separated from their children, and there would be people there then to take care of their family. That they should be making choices about who will take care of their children. Because there is such a mixed, in the immigrant community, the households are so mixed. Some parents don't have legal status and their children do. And so, what that will lead to inevitably is a separation of families. And that is distressing, and that is what we are confronted with, Mr. President, and it is your leadership in convening the committee and bringing us the best experts and committing the resources of the city to defend that. But it's exactly what we should be doing. These are the lessons that inform us about the urgency of our times today. We are benefiting from your heroism. We are benefiting from your life experiences, and we should honor you best by doing all that we can to stop the oppressive era that we are in today. Thank you, thank you, thank you so very much. God bless.
Mr. Corretts, back to you.
And unfortunately, there's not much doubt that our president has done a lot to validate racists and bigots and antisemites across this country and beyond. And I know if my father were alive today, he would encourage me and all of us to remain vigilant, and he would encourage us to push back and not allow things to happen, and not just those things that are directed at Jews, but at all people in our community and in our country. Now, we're perhaps the last generation of people that will know a Holocaust survivor. It's on us to make sure that the following generations never forget. And so, I appreciate this opportunity today, as we all do, and we will continue to be sure that people remember. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Give him a round of applause. Thank you. Very touching. Thank you.
And now, I'd like to have us join in presenting certificates to congregation Etz Chaim and Rabbi Rubin and to the Museum of the Holocaust. And maybe Henry can accept that.
Thank you very much. May I add a word? If anyone wants to...
I just feel compelled to add Pete Seeger's song in which he begins by pointing out that it's always darkest before the dawn.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to our multiple public comments section. So, if you could pull up Mr. Sax for me. So, Mr. Arnold Sax. Okay, now pull up Mr. Eric Previn. If we could pull him up on my computer, Eric Previn. Okay, Mr. Previn, you have 1K, 1L, MOP, QR, item 4, 47, 53, 55, 56, A and B.
Thank you, sir. It is Eric Previn from the Second District. And I hope Mr. Sax materializes, and you'll give him a chance. I know he wanted to address this body. Item number four, I'd like to thank Jeffrey Ebenstein, who once again is making it possible for Ariel Glot Kosher Meat Market to finally get the liquor license that they do need. Because when people gather stuff for the holidays at the butcher shop, they do need the wine to go along with it. And this will, given the public interest and necessity, provide that they can have a liquor license. And I think Ebenstein has looked closely, and there will be no law enforcement impact in this particular environment. So, we have to say thank you. Item number 56 is CD 13. That's the great Mitch O'Farrell. It's a map. There's an LLC that's getting things the way they like it. I'd asked O'Farrell's group, they're doing a great job, to return the money to Masuborsky. There was a finding in the Ethics Commission, 4 to 1, that they over-contributed. Hopefully, he will take care of that now that it's been resolved and simply return the contributions from one of his committees that would be appropriate. Because everybody else has been penalized and punished. But he has yet to return the money. So, I asked Mr. O'Farrell to do that timely. Thank you, sir. Item number 55, we have Mitch Englander doing what he does best. He is torturing some applicant who got approved, but then he's put an A-B option on the church for 150 people. But they're concerned about traffic. So, he's, I can't tell because they did a special one on a Friday afternoon. And then, but something will happen today at either item A or B. There's two options. One is they veto these folks who are trying to get their thing through. The alternative is they obviously comply with whatever they want, but they aren't saying what they want, per se. So, I can't quite tell. And 16, I just have to say thanks to CD 5 once again. These guys are putting in all-way stop signs all over the place in CD 5, probably with connection to Vision Zero. But I don't know, I don't know where because they didn't outline it in their agenda. So, they should do that. Item number 53, we're putting out to RFP, the Pickle Building, down in CD 14. That's Weezer's district. So, he is looking closely. Upstairs this morning, there was a similar HHH Oversight Meeting. This was the administrative version. They have the administrative and also the civilian. Simple request, for general obligation bonds, you cannot use them for city costs unless it's a city property. But since HHH will apply to some non-city properties, we're trying to make sure that, I was upset by this, the city can bill HHH. Now, maybe that's okay, but to what degree? I asked, how much on a $3.5 million project will we have to pay to the city? And the response was, we're not taking comments from the floor. That's unfortunate. Because I think the public would like to know that we're not bilking these propositions that we've just put through for city costs that are $200 million in the hole. As we know, the budget's coming out. We're all very excited for the budget hearing. That's what these tables are for. And certainly, we're going to take a front and center kind of role.
Okay, let's go, let's go one minute for his general public comment.
Okay, so, for my general public comment, I just didn't understand in item 27, how there can be a motion for Smart Manufacturing Innovation Institute seconded by Mr. Fuentes. Because it's not, if it's not, if I'm not wrong, there is no Fuentes. Fuentes, abdicate. He left all the people of Los Angeles in the dirt. You took over, sir, as I recall. You said you were going to stay out of the CD 7 race, which is active and ongoing. But then you endorsed one of the candidates, which was a big red flag for those of us. So, what in the world is going on? And how in the world could we possibly keep breaking rules right here in City Hall in front of everybody on television and moving forward without any kind of accountability? I just, I just feel that we could do a little better on that. And in conclusion, I will just simply say how excited I am for the budget hearings. We are going to have, Mr. Kirkory will give us the details, but lots of opportunities. And he's going to make it clear by time when each department this year is going to be scheduled. So, there's not a show up in the morning and stay all day kind of a feeling.
Thank you, sir.
So, thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hunt? Are you here? And sir, let me just remind you the cards you have filled out to speak on. The items, general public comment, item 1A, 7, 42A, 42B, 42C, 42D, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, and 56A. Go ahead, sir.
Well, what order in the area do we take them in first? Like 40, 41, 40, and 42? So, if we're talking about the actual liens on the property or the protests of building and safety on number item 1, I am for that, or not for that. And then, if we go to 42, let's see. What is, what 42 is regarding? The actual assessments, things like that. Okay, 42, let me get back to 42. This is a pretty big agenda. Let's see, the 42 would be resolution to revelate to move various properties from escrow, rent-to-escrow, and things like that. Let's go ahead and move those properties to rent-escrow. And I'm going to spend my last time on general public comment and get out of here. Here's what I really want to say to all the people of the councils and things like that. I've become a watchdog for the ACLU and the National Lawyers Guild and things like that. If you think that I'm not going to be holding you guys accountable for your actions in the next three to six months, I will be. My attorney firms, Parker &amp; Steinberry, Stephen Rhodey, Jim Lampley, and Carol Sobel, all will be holding you guys accountable for you guys' actions and things like that. So, be really careful around me and things like that, that you guys run the meetings correctly and that everything is governed in a correct way, in a correct fashion way. We're moving, we're coming out the suits and things like that, or out the costumes, as Bernard Parks would call them. And we're really going to get serious in the next three to six months about what's going on in City Hall and City Council and things like that. And on my last, last thing is that the—
Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Huh?
Thank you very much.
That's not my general public comment.
Yes, it was. You said you were going to move on to your general public comment, and we've given it on.
Yeah, but you got to give me time for general public comment.
We gave you notice by saying you were going to move on to public comment. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Herman. We did give you time. We gave you a minute. Thank you. You're more than welcome to. Thank you very much. Mr. Herman, are you ready? Mr. Herman, you have filled out cards—
Not regarding the hearing protest—
Excuse me, Mr. Herman. General public comment and item 1A are the only two items you've filled out cards for. Item 1A?
You started my time already, though.
No, I did not.
Okay, you correct the clock. It says 30 seconds.
You've signed up for item 1A and general public comment. Go ahead.
Hearing protests of appeals, giving in to you is not the right thing to do, liens. How can I object when you won't take it from me? Giving you is it the right thing to do? Tell us why the lien has turned everything around for you, you, and you, taxpayers and ratepayers. Tell me why. You can call it, you can call it another lonely lien day in LA, bitch, 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 pimps. Another lonely day? Let me emphasize that. How can we ever change the lien process of all this responsibility about liens that I feel are harmful, painful, and unconstitutional, violating your First Amendment to come here and protest and waive the goddamn lien off your property? Ask for a letter of certification. Emotional pain and suffering is a bitch, bitch, bitch. You can go your own way, Neary. You can go your own way.
Your general public comment, sir?
You can go your own way when I wave to you. You can go your own way. How can I object, bitch, 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 telling us why the lien has turned everything around? We must, bitch, 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 to the pimps of CD 6 because they fuck with my time. I'm here to protest my First Amendment, my Eighth Amendment. Fuck you, wet facts. Leave me in America because this is my world. This is my time. I've been homeless, and now I'm telling you, Judah, help, 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 help all the homeless in LA. HHH, bitch, bitch, bitch. That's why, how can I object when you tell us we don't have no more time, you bitch, 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 bitch? I'm telling you, Fleetwood Mac. Ow!
Have a great day, Mr. Herman. Thank you very much. Next speaker is Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh is the next speaker. Mr. Sax, you're going to be next after Mr. Walsh. Thank you. Mr. Walsh, you're speaking on general public comment and items 1, I'm sorry, 2, 3, 42A, 43, 44, and 48. Go ahead.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Number 2 is BID, Business Improvement District, Special Assessment. Again, the Business Improvement District did a good job. They were selling heroin across the street. The cops were taking a piece of it. I went to the Business Improvement District, retired cops, and they cleaned it out. So, the Business Improvement District is doing an excellent job. Number, number 3, this is a special assessment. These are special assessments. This is, this is kickback money. And you're not going to hear anyone talk about these special assessments up here. Number 42, these are, this is REAP, Rent-Escrow Account Program. Again, you are doing an excellent job. I'm not one of those white guys who tell you all to bring it quicks when you do a good job. I say you do a good job. Number 43, this is putting Kurt Russell on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. The Hollywood Walk of Fame is vile. It's falling apart. You can't tell the dog shit from the stars anymore. Go out there and take a look at it. Take a goddamn look at that. And I want everyone to know, here in the world, the Hollywood Walk of Fame is a piece of shit now. They've allowed it to fall apart. In Bradley's day, you could eat off the Hollywood Walk of Fame. It was so clean. But now that we have Garcetti in here, it's a shithole. The Hollywood Walk of Fame is a shithole. And then, 20, okay, what is an exemption? These are, in other words, somebody shows up, they're related to Weezer, they're not qualified for the job. So, what you do is you give them an exemption. Then you can bring in any old pieces of crap in here, and they can hold the job. And exemption means that what they are doing is removing the qualifications for the job and putting people in there. And you can see here, look at all the exemptions. 1, 2, 3, 4, it's about 30 exemptions. There's no physical impact because they're getting the money that people who have qualifications have the qualifications in the city charter. What this is doing is taking the city charter and using it for ass wipes so their friends can get jobs. So, their friends can get jobs. This happened before, but not to the degree that it is now. Okay, now, public comment. I, my great-grandfather was named Leoburger. He came from Hungary. He left, he didn't wait for someone to knock on the goddamn door to take him out. He left several years before. And you know who called him shithole? You know who called him names? The Jews. Because the Jews were saying before they broke with the Nazis, and many, many Jews had financial ties to the Nazis, that any Jew who left the country because of the Nazis was an alarmist. That was what was happening before the Nazis double-crossed the Jews. And I'm telling you right now that HollywoodHighlands.org, come to our website, and you will find what we're talking about. The Jews, my great-grandfather came to LA, came to New York City. He had two children. One married a Jew, and the other married an Irishman. That's why I exist.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. O'Farrell?
36/4 with, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's send item 36/4 with for Mr. O'Farrell. Thank you very much. Mr. Arnold Sax? Let me just let you know, hold on for just a second. Let me just let you know what items you've requested to speak on. General public comment, item 1B, 1C, 1D, 1E, 1F, 1H, 1I, items 3, 44, 54, 56A, and 56B. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Items 56A and B refer to track, tracks in the city, which would bring up Quimby fees, which would be used for parks. One of my favorite items for the city of Los Angeles. You know, there's a million parcels of land in the city of Los Angeles that get assessed a tax by the county. And when the county had its two assessments that are now defunct, they were raising almost $86 a year on those assessments, which would mean the city would have $86 million for parks. Why is the city not pursuing that money? Do you realize the city of Norwalk, excuse me, not the city of Norwalk, the Norwalk Golf Course, which is a county-owned operation, got $3 million in excess city funds for, that were collected as revenue from the tax assessments for the parks? How much funding comes to the city from the tax revenue assessment for the parks? And who's looking out for it? Cities like Los Angeles are park poor, but they're collecting $86 million, the county of Los Angeles. Somebody ought to step up and say, where's our share? Who cares? I held item 54. 54 refers to a Tax Exempt Fiscal Responsibility Act. They're going to issue tax-exempt bonds, which is a little different than the TIFIA loans that come from the, come to Metro. The TIFIA loans are federal loans. Do you realize that they're used for the subways? That the city is paying a tax on the federal loans to Metro in addition to the sales tax revenue for those subway lines? So, if they got a TIFIA loan for half a billion dollars, $500 million, they're being taxed 3% on that loan. It's not being deducted from the overall cost of the project. It's being taxed as part of the project. Imagine going to the bank, and the bank says, we'll give you a loan, only we're going to tax you for the total cost of your house and not for the down, not exclude the down payment that you're being, that you're making on that house. City council says, yay. Mayor Spaghetti, who's going to head Metro, says, yay. How do you do that kind of financial wizardry and expect the city to be solvent? Well— Well, you know what? You have the county as a leader. They're only over fifty billion dollars in the hole because of their, they didn't pay their tax bills for their health care and their employment benefits. Fifty billion. Public comment, ma'am? Hola. Public comment? Yes. So there's stories in the newspaper regarding air knob and the transit occupancy tax that they're not paying or they are paying. And it's almost ludicrous because this city council and some of the members that have gone on to higher office, including the mayor, were granting waivers to, Rich Carlton doesn't pay transit occupancy tax. The new building, the Korean, the high-rise building at Wilshire and Grand, they're not paying transit occupancy tax. How many buildings in downtown Los Angeles got their transit occupancy tax waived by the sitting city council? And now you're gonna worry about air knob not paying their bill, who are taking the money out of the pockets of people who can't afford to live in L.A.? Makes sense to me. It's right along with that budget, budgetary conferences that we're gonna have starting tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Madam Clerk, let's move on to Item Number Four. We have two speaker cards. Donna, are you here? You filled out a card for Item Four and Calvin Harris, Harrison, is he here? I only have you down for Item Four, Donna.
If you wanna speak on Item One, you have to fill out a card.
And then followed by Donna is Calvin Harrison. Is he here?
Can I go put in one and come back?
Donna, you have to speak on Item Four. So go ahead. Start on Item Four.
Okay, shoot. That's gonna throw me off. Okay, um, I wanna talk about, that was a great presentation for the Holocaust survivors, for the videos of Judaism. Yes, it can happen again. Anyway, we wanna do this, it's okay to have the, uh, say all alcohol for aerial glatt kosher market because that way they can sell Passover wine. It's not just going over to sell beer and different liquors. You need to have it for to sell Passover wine, so, um, I had, so, uh, anyway, I thought that was great having that Jewish Members' Day and, but we need, uh, we shouldn't have tried to put against Donald Trump in the same area.
Can I just go straight, since you won't let me do Number One, can I go straight to public comment now?
Yeah, let's give her a minute for General Public Comment. Or she already, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Yeah. We need ever vigilant.
For General Public Comment, Ms., uh...
What?
You did not put in a card.
I did.
But I know you, I know why you're here. We're gonna give you your minute, so just go ahead.
Oh, on Number One?
Go ahead. No, this is your General Public Comment. Go ahead.
I did, there's something wrong with the machine.
Just go on, Donna, this is your time.
There's something wrong with the machine. I put submit.
Okay, I'll have them, I'll have them check it out. Go ahead.
Okay. We need be ever vigilant against our enemies, not the Republican Party. And, oh, and for the Holocaust Members' Day, I agree, we must be ever vigilant. We must not let evil to triumph. We see the beauty and strength of Judaism today, but it's not enough. We must be vigilant and not allow ours to be taken out by Islamic terrorists who wants Sharia law. We must vigilant and stand by our President Trump and not let North Korea send nuclear bombs. We must stand together and unite offense against the ones who spread against, hate against the United States and Israel. We must not allow our country to be taken out by communism. Parties shown a lot of horrible treatment for the people who live in communist countries. We must ever be vigilant against Islam who wants to come over here and take over the United States and turn it into Sharia law, 'cause this can't happen.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Harrison, Calvin Harrison, and it's my understanding, Item Four?
Yes, before you start the clock, sir, what happened is, your system is new, so it's basically, I'm just general comment, sir. Okay? And I deal with any item, because everything is new.
Okay, let's let you do your General Public Comment.
Thank you. My name is Seifu Kelvin Berman Harrison, disciple of Grand Master Tak Moon Hong of the South Korean-Chinese Kung Fu Association. I'm addressing Reverend Jesse Jackson. Reverend Jesse Jackson, sir, what are you doing with my civil rights paperwork there, sir, and my legal documents in order to help all individuals of Los Angeles concerning injustice that is happening here? Reverend Jesse Jackson, what is going on, sir, with my inventions that you are my proposed investor, my invention that deals with the anti-satellite, anti-drones, surveillance paneling installation for the roof, for the floor, and for the walls? Sir, my inventions worth multi-trillions of dollars. Reverend Jesse Jackson, you have drawings of many of my inventions that can help Americans and help citizens all over the world. Sir, I am tired of trying to be a martyr for your organization and the N.W.A.C.P. I'm out here risking my life for myself, for my family, and for individuals because of injustice of here in Los Angeles and where I stay at my apartment of individuals that you have allowed to continue to come inside my apartment and steal and destroy my personal items. You have known about this for three years and you continue to let this go on, Reverend Jesse Jackson. This is not a game. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, if I can get Jacqueline Richardson, General Public Comment, Anna Moore, Derek Rath, and is it, uh, Maura Crisolago? Jack, Ms. Richardson, please. Derek, if you're here, come up. Anna Moore, please. Yes, Ms. Richardson?
Long Beach, Lakewood, Beverly Hills, Santa Monica, Los Angeles, as far as I know, are not aware of holographs. Holographs are like people. They need to be regulated. People have to, and the police department has to know more about holographs in case they malfunction. They need to know how to handle them. City Council and the people need to know how to handle holographs in case they malfunction. Some of, some of the holographs know how to steal. I, I don't recognize a holograph if I see one because there's, they look so realistic. I used to be able to recognize them, but not anymore. They might as well just be anybody. The reason why we don't recognize them is because the manufacturers don't want you to recognize them. They put them anywhere they want, anywhere they want to, and nobody knows who they are. The police departments particularly need to know how to handle holographs.
Yes, sir. Please come and identify yourself.
My name is Derek Rath. Thank you, councilmembers, Councilman Bonin, for giving you a moment of your time. My name is Derek Rath and Venice has been my home since nineteen seventy-seven. My first apartment cost ninety dollars a month. How times have changed. I am grateful to Home Sharing for enabling me to continue as an active member of the community and to age with meaning in the town I love. Just like the hotels, I pay the city's T.O.T. taxes and never have had a complaint about our guests. I believe the Home Sharing Ordinance as written fails to adequately differentiate between unsupervised multiple units, the main source of nuisance complaints, and I have from the hotel industry, and people like me who threaten no one. If it did, individual homeowners could make available space in their home or in a granny flat on their premises without arbitrary days-per-year cap that then would be just punitive and unnecessary. Let this ordinance become a win-win for both homeowner and the city, not a draconian and punitive embargo. Help me stay in my home, not force me to leave.
Thank you. Thank you. If I could add the next speaker, thank you so much. Please identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Anna Moore. I'm president of Consolidated Board of Realtors.
Hi.
Hi, how are you? So I just wanted to bring to the attention that April is Fair Housing Month and N.R.A. is recognizing Fair Housing Month through a week-long of activities of political advocacy and home fairs. We, at this time, we'd like to just bring the awareness to the African-American of the importance of homeownership. And we know that homeownership is a vehicle to increase black wealth. So we just wanna invite the community out and let the council know that we are having activities that we would love for you to attend on Saturday, April twenty-ninth, our Community Wealth Building Day. And I think my time is almost up, but I wanted to just say that black homeownership matters and we wanna increase and heighten the awareness of black homeownership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maura, please come, identify yourself.
Good morning, Councilmember O'Farrell. My name is Maura Crisolago. I'm a twenty-one-year resident homeowner in D.C.-thirteen Silver Lake. I'd like to comment on the Home Sharing proposed ordinance. My husband and I have been home sharing for just over a year. We rent three bedrooms in our six-bedroom home on the Airbnb platform, and it's been a lifesaver for me regarding income. As a GYN cancer survivor, I live with severe bowel and bladder damage. This makes it nearly impossible for me to work outside of my home. Being a home sharing host allows me to manage my condition comfortably while being productive and earning a very modest income. I'm able to be right next to the loo. The hundred-and-eighty-day cap and the limit on the number of rooms are overly restrictive and will prevent me from earning a sufficient income. Essentially, I'll be limited to earning eighteen thousand per year, which is not acceptable for maintaining my standard of living nor anyone else's. Please vote in favor of minimal restrictions so hosts like me can continue to work and be productive and do what we love to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so that closes General Public Comment. Let's move to Item Three. Rafiq Kazarian, please come forward, sir, on Item Three.
Thank you, council, for hearing us today. I am Rafiq Kazarian, the president of the Los Fields Village Business Improvement District. And I'm here today to thank everyone for hopefully voting for us and allowing us another year. We have a lot of activities, a lot of good things that we have on the books planned for twenty-seventeen and further. It's taken us a little bit of time to do some research and bring us to where we are right now. So I look forward to another year of being Los Fields Village Business Improvement District's president, and I hope that you guys approve us today. Thank you.
Hey, give us one quick thing you got going. You said you had, give us, you got twenty seconds.
We, um, our first quick thing that we have going is on May seventh, we have a major cleanup coming up, and we have probably about seventy-five volunteers. It's, we've partnered with Big Sunday, so we're looking forward to doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So let's vote, and thank you guys for coming down. So let's vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Let's vote now on Items One, Two, and Four. One, Two, and Four members, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Let's vote on Item Thirty-seven as amended. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Item Fifty-three as amended. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Items Forty-two, now we'll vote on Forty-two through Item Fifty-two. So let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. Now we can move on to Items Fifty-four and Fifty-six. On those two items, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, Item Seven. It is seven, correct? Mr. City Attorney or Mr. Rue, you wanna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to open the Item Number Seven up, and I, by first, I wanna thank Councilmember Paul Corretz for your support and continued leadership on the city's animal welfare issues. And I really wanna thank a lot of the advocates who are here today and who also contributed and collaborated with my office, the Animal Defenders International, the Humane Society of the United States, and the Performing Animal Welfare Society, and all the other great advocates who submitted letters of support. Wild and exotic animals have a long history of being exploited for public and private entertainment in our city. We see these firsthand in the Fourth Council District where lavish house parties in the Hollywood Hills have used exotic animals as props, such as an elephant, lion, and even most recently, a baby giraffe. Using wild and exotic animals poses a serious public safety concern to the community. The animals suffer from the performing, from performing the unnatural acts expected of them, especially when forced by inhumane training practices. And humans are at risk too, from the public safety hazard that arises from the animal mishandling. Treating animals in this manner has taught generations of people that it is okay to view wild and exotic animals as toys. This is not acceptable. It's time that the city of Los Angeles take action to make clear that exhibiting such animals in this way is no longer in line with our city's values. I do wanna clarify where we are in the process. Today's action will request that the city attorney draft an ordinance that prohibit wild and exotic animal performances in most instances in the city of Los Angeles. This ordinance will then come back to committee and back to this council for review and approval. We are at the start of this journey. I also wanna clarify a few pieces of misinformation that has caused some concern at various rescues, petting zoos and, petting zoos and other similar organizations. The goal of this ordinance is to stop wild and exotic, exotic animals from being used for entertainment and in particular, being trained to do what humans tell them to do. Los Angeles will likely look towards San Francisco, the largest city in California, to enact a similar ordinance as the model. San Francisco bars public showings in which wild and exotic animals are required to perform tricks, fight, or participate as accompaniments to entertainment, amusement, or benefits of an audience. An ordinance modeled after this will like, most likely, will likely not affect legitimate zoos, conservation presentations, or rescues. I also wanna touch on other, on one, one other issue, filming, and why legitimate filming is being exempt from this ordinance. The use of animals in film production in Los Angeles is much better regulated and overseen compared to the regulations in other cities where film production may go if we're no longer allowed in Los Angeles. We encourage film production companies to continue to move towards computer-generated wild and exotic animals, which allow for the same movie magic without the risk of endangering animals or public safety. This is an important step forward for Los Angeles in its effort to be the most humane city in the United States. I urge my colleagues to support this motion to prohibit the exhibition of wild or exotic animals for entertainment. And I believe there is a friendly motion, a friendly amendment from Councilmember Englander.
Mr. Englander.
And I wanna thank you for working with me on this as well. While we all know that, and we've seen certainly, wild animals being mistreated, misused, displayed at these commercial parties, if you will, there's also a lot of good. There are a lot of terrific conservation and animal protectors out there in the space, ones that work very closely with educational opportunities for children and others so they can appreciate how to care for and respect animals in our society, certainly not just our, our zoo, but out there in the space. And so coming up with language to make sure that we don't legislate it out completely, but we eliminate and focus on narrowly what we're trying to accomplish while respecting those professional, educated, and licensed trainers in society as well. This is the limited change that I have. And I'd like the city attorney to come back when they draft their ordinance to define exactly what wild and/or exotic mean, to define what a legitimate filming purpose means, and legit, legitimate conservation-related program or presentation. So that should be defined in the ordinance. And then also to add beyond the, give me a second, beyond the accredited by Association of Zoos and Aquariums, to add and/or the U.S. Department of Agriculture, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and the California Fish and Wildlife Service to those organizations. And then lastly, as I mentioned, the educational wildlife presentations that are so important to legitimate conservation organizations here in L.A. that are so important to legitimate conservation organizations here in LA will demonstrate that the primary goal is to teach respect for wildlife and the idea of conservation by professionally inspected and monitored handlers. And those will be by the organizations that we had listed, which will be in the ordinance. So that will be my friendly amendment, and seconded by Mr. Rue. Thank you very much. And I think the city attorney probably needs to weigh in on that for substance.
Mr. Rue, you second the?
Yeah, I'll second the amendments. They are reaffirmation of what was already stated in the motion, so.
Let's go to the city attorney. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. President. While some of-
Do I grab Bob's mic? I think your mic's out.
Is my mic still out? No.
That's fine.
So while some of the amending elements of the amendment were merely seeking clarification, some of them are substantive. And I recommend that we reopen in light of that public comment for a limited amount of time. I note that comment has already been heard in committee, so a limited amount is reasonable under the circumstances.
Then this is what I would ask, Mr. President. I've already talked to a number of the folks that are here, and I know there are a number of them that filled out comment cards if we reopen public comment, or a lot of them had never been here before, didn't know that public comment had already been satisfied in committee. So I'd ask, they have already said that they have four or five speakers that are willing to represent, five that are willing to represent, all of them here. So we can limit that then because they're not major changes.
Okay, I'll go 10 minutes.
To five minutes. We can do it for five minutes, and they'll each come up for one minute each.
Five is a, five? Okay, why don't, let's see how this goes, okay?
So we've got five. Five speakers for one minute each.
Benay, Karen, Karen is at McHatten, Eric Weld, Michael Morris, Leo Bryan. Please come forward if I called your name. Please come forward. Lindsay Laris. So if I called your name, the sooner you get up, the more people I can get. Hi, right in front of the mic. Identify yourself and then go.
Hi, thank you for listening to me. My name is Leo Bryan. I'm the Outreach Manager with the Humane Society of the United States. The HSUS applauds Councilmember David Rue for introducing this legislation to ban the exhibition of wild or exotic animals for entertainment, including circuses and other wild or exotic animal shows and rentals for house parties or events. I just want to say that these wild animals that are rented out for events and parties and are often used in circuses are not allowed to express their full range of natural behaviors or socialize with other members of their species. There's also a definite risk for humans as well. If the animal tries to escape or lash out, it can be deadly for the trainer, the audience, and the animal. Los Angeles and the state of California have already passed bullhook bans and need to take this next logical and compassionate step of passing this ordinance. We wholeheartedly support this ordinance.
Thank you. Is Sheri here? I didn't see her. Sheri Shankar, come on. Will you, Sheri Shankar, you get behind. Now go. Right, guys, relax. The clock is not moving. It's really, relax. Next speaker. Come on. No, Sheri, I just wanted, you're gonna, yeah. So next speaker, right, yes. I just called you to get in line. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Benay Karp. I'm an animal trainer in the entertainment industry. I feel that instead of penalizing the law-abiding licensed animal owners, resources could be better used to stop people who are actually operating illegally without oversight and licenses. Those, those are the people who may not care for their animals like we do. Those are the people who are maybe handling animals dangerously or inappropriately. Stronger enforcement of our existing laws, making it illegal for anyone to hire an animal from an unlicensed vendor for any use. Penalties for using animals that are kept or used without permitting or licensing. That's what you should be focusing on, not people who are operating legally with proper government oversight. Because people who are using and keeping animals illegally are not going to be stopped by this ban. In fact, you'll be giving them better opportunities for this illegal activity to be more profitable by putting animal owners-
Okay, next. Applause takes up the extra time. Come on, let's go.
Hello, and thank you, Councilman Rue, for proposing this ordinance. My name is Lindsay Laris, and I'm here on behalf of the Animal Legal Defense Fund. We exclusively use the law in order to enact change for animals, and we're so happy that the City of Los Angeles is looking to make that next step. In terms of the amendment that was proposed, anybody exhibiting an animal currently already has to be licensed by the USDA and permitted by the California Fish and Wildlife Services. So that does nothing to change the existing ordinance. The Animal Legal Defense Fund and our team of legal experts are committed to working with the city's attorney's office to clarify any ambiguities in the law and help draft an ordinance that would be for the best interests of the animals in the city and also for the citizen's safety. So thank you very much, and I hope that the city council agrees to pass this law today.
Thank you. The next speaker, please identify yourself.
My name is Eric Weld. My wife and I own a company called Hollywood Animals. We provide animals for film, events, education, and the like. I think it's important, we touched on permits. Any legal entity that can do business in the City of LA has federal permits, state permits, county permits, and city permits. LA Animal Services has spent a lot of time honing what is required. They have a dossier on every single proper animal company that comes and does business in here. I think, I commend Dr. Rue, excuse me, Councilman Rue for bringing this up and to our attention. But banning exotic and wild animals outright is a mistake, especially when the majority of people in this room, all of the animal people specialists in this room, care enormously about their animals. And I offer any council member here the opportunity to come up to my ranch and see our animals, our tigers, our lions, all of our animals.
Thank you, sir, next speaker.
Thank you.
And if I have not, hold, you're costing yourself time. If I have not called your name, you should not be in line. So Mr. Herman, Mr. Pierman, please take a seat. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
My name wasn't called, can I?
Then, no, then the next speaker. We just don't get up in line. So I'm... You gotta wait till your name is called. Go ahead. Mr. Coretts, hold on.
Is this on?
Can't hear you.
I just note for the record that Mr. Herman has been yelling out from his spot, making distracting gestures, making goat noises, et cetera, and we may want to give him a warning.
Okay, this is the last time, mister. Okay, so do I have Michael Morris? You get in line, Michael. And ma'am, please identify yourself. Yes.
Hi, I'm Karen McHatten. I'm an animal trainer for over 40 years. Because some police abuse suspects, does that mean police should not function in LA? Because some priests sexually abuse small children, does that mean priests should not function in LA? Because some businessmen practice white-collar crime, does that mean businesspeople should not conduct business in LA? And because some politicians are corrupt, maybe even a councilman are corrupt and use our office for financial gain, does that mean people in public office are all corrupt? In this motion, in the negative example of animals and trainers and animal handlers mishandling animals are the exception and not the norm. If you drive legitimate, kind, talented, caring animal trainers out of work, you help send animal work to Mexico, India, China, and Argentina. This is already happening since these places are cheap and welcoming. These places require no oversight, humane group monitoring, or animal care regulations. Animals will surely suffer working out of LA and USA.
Okay, thank you. Your time is up. No, ma'am, your time is up. We gotta get other people. No, 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 no. Everybody gets a minute. No, her mic is off, so now I need Sheri Shankar, Julia Calucci, Catherine Doyle, and I think it's David Hurd or something like that. Hi.
Hi, Sheri Shankar. I just want to thank Councilmember Rue for introducing this ordinance. It's a natural extension of what we started a few years ago with the bullhook ban that was unanimously voted on. And ultimately, the public spoke because Ringling decided to close their business because the public did not want to see these animals being mistreated, used, and abused for our entertainment. I welcome Councilmember Englander's amendments. I think they're perfectly reasonable. A lot of these people who are here, they make money off the backs of animals, so of course they're going to, you know, oppose this strongly. Anyways, I hope that all of you there here at the council will vote yes to move this ordinance forward to the city attorney. Thank you so much for hearing this, too. Thank you for your compassion.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Identify yourself.
Hello, I'm Julia Calucci. I'm a primatologist with People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals, and I'm also an independent consultant for primate care facilities across the country. And I just wanted to clarify something. There was a mention about the difference between licensing and accreditation. And I want to emphasize that accreditation should only be through, for facilities that are credited by the Association of Zoos and Aquariums, the AZA. This is the only nationally recognized organization that accredits zoos. It's considered the gold standard. In cases when the AZA does allow animals to be taken out of the zoo and used for education in schools or community events, they have very strict standards for the care, welfare, and transport of the animals. They do not allow animals to be taken out of the zoo for parties or other forms of entertainment. So this is why we really advocate the AZA being the only accreditation organization. Licensing is a different issue.
Thank you. And I'm looking for Paul Han. Looking for Paul Han. Yes.
My name is Catherine Doyle. I'm the Director of Science, Research, and Advocacy for the Performing Animal Welfare Society, or PAWS. We operate three captive wildlife sanctuaries in California where we care for elephants, bears, and big cats, and many other animals, some from the entertainment industry. The display of wild animals in traveling shows and parties and other events poses a serious threat to human safety as they're in close proximity or in direct contact with the public. And this includes the elephant, giraffe, and lions reported at the house parties in LA. At our sanctuaries, we purposely do not allow the public to be in contact with wild animals because we know how dangerous and unpredictable they are. Unfortunately, the public believes a handler can control a dangerous wild animal with a leash or command when this isn't the case. Whether an animal is rescued or bred for use in entertainment, it doesn't change the fact that these animals can be dangerous, spread disease, or suffer from intense confinement and the stress of travel and handling, other than the required licensing permit. So USDA and California Fish and Wildlife, that's required, and they have very minimal requirements.
Thank you. Thank you. Next. Okay.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is David Rehird, and I'm the Director of Wildlife Learning Center. I'd like to start by saying that I think it's wonderful to see so many people concerned about animals. I, too, am concerned with animal welfare and the preservation of biodiversity. And I agree that there are concerns about unlicensed people, individuals exploiting animals in public places for pictures and personal attention. However, I'm concerned that this ban will interfere with the valuable work that educators do, like those at Wildlife Learning Center. I think the real issue is exotic pet owners who do not have California Fish and Wildlife permits, USDA permits, or LA Animal Service permits. The regulations are in place, and any complaints or concerns can be addressed to these aforementioned agencies. USDA licensees are held to the highest standards of animal husbandry and welfare. Inspections are rigorous, thorough, covering every aspect of animal care. I respectfully urge the LA City Council to use language that exempts USDA licensees. Thank you.
So, Mr. Han? Mr. Han?
Hi there. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Paul Han. I'm president, co-founder of Wildlife Learning Center. I'm also a wildlife biologist. I've studied animals in the field and captivity for 30 years. And I'm here representing the truly educational and conservative-based organizations throughout Los Angeles. All of our staff hold degrees in biology and are professionally trained educators. We have taught over 22,000 presentations in the last 19 years to predominantly Title I LASD schoolchildren. I would like very much to offer my expertise in those of people like me with you folks in creating this bill and putting together fairly with that knowledge. Our knowledge and practices of husbandry are on par with AZA-accredited zoos. We have record-keeping, we have a veterinary suite on site, we have a zoo-certified veterinarian that we have access to 24/7. We work with all the major universities in the area with programs that are incorporated into that, and I would like very much to be considered in this.
Thank you. Okay. So that's almost eight minutes over the allotted time. But I want to say to those of you that are here, once this comes back from the city attorney's office, it's going to go to committee. You want to make sure you monitor this so that you can go to committee. You'll have an opportunity to speak again. So with that said, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, that's approved. Mr. Englander? Item, or what's next, Madam Clerk? Is it I, Mr. Englanders? Yes. Item 55? And my cards on item 55? Daniel Dalton, Pierre, LaSalle, Robert Lemashaw? Please come forward. Please come forward. And identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Perry Alaristle. I work for Koensman Associates. I was a traffic engineer hired by the applicant to review traffic at the site. They also did a noise study with our firm. We diligently tried to get the LA DOT to review it. However, the site does not generate enough traffic to warrant a traffic investigation or a traffic memo. So they were given a negative declaration. The client still pursued us doing additional studies. For Sunday, there will be a Level Service A. And on the weekdays, the level of service will not be impacted. There is no significant impact. The weekday levels of service range from C to F. However, the project does not impact that. That's an existing two major crossroads.
Thank you. Next, the next speaker. Do I have Daniel?
Good morning, Daniel Dalton. On behalf of West Valley Christian Center, thank you for allowing us to be here today. On behalf of my client, what we're asking the board to do is to consider an option where it would adopt the CEQA findings and reverse the decision of the North Area Planning Board. The findings from our traffic engineer and from our CEQA are really undisputed. There was no, when it was before the North Area Planning Board, there was no dispute that we met all the regulations, the local regulations for the city and the county on traffic, where the driveway is placed and where the lights are. And this is in the Chatsworth area, right at DeSoto and Chatsworth. It's a parcel property. It's about one acre, a little more than one acre. It really meets within this particular area. It's a great location, and we think this is a good opportunity for the board to correct a wrong from the North Area Planning Commission. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hermans? It's my understanding you have one minute.
Yeah. Medication-negative declaration of appeals, pipita, relative to the property located at 10650 North DeSoto Avenue. I was up in that street less than a week ago. That's the valley. And to determine whether this project will have a significant effect on the environment? Hell, yeah, dibble-dwarf. And to remind the judgment of the City of Los Angeles that the documents consulting the record of proceedings, rookies? City Attorney, I'm on the topic, asshole. Proceedings in this matter-
Now you're not on topic.
Located at Consult File 17- Located at Council File seventeen zero four five one in custody of the city clerk. Did you get that, Erica, for the record? And I oppose. I demand that you shove this and wait for public transparency to be heard, Joe Busciano, moron.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Englander? Oh, wait, did Lamishaw, Robert Lamishaw?
Good morning, my name is Robert Lamishaw with JPL Zoning Services. We are the consultants who work with West Valley Christian Church. Very briefly, we believe that the Area Planning Commission seriously erred and abused their discretion in their determination to support the appeal and overturn the zoning administrator's decision. The information from the Area Planning Commission for their justifications, we believe, is in violation of current city practices, policies, and published procedures, and that they have no fact-based issues to use in their determination. We respectfully request that the council overturn the decision of the Area Planning Commission, certify the environmental clearance as issued by the zoning administrator and certified by the Area Planning Commission, and allow this project to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Englander?
Thank you. Mr. President, I ask that our colleagues, that we support option B.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President, a second there for that motion?
I'll second it. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That brings us where? That brings us where?
But...
Go ahead.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Okay, they are posted, they are referred. Announcements, members? Announcements? All rise for adjourning motions? All rise. Gonna look to my left side. Mr. Englander?
Thank you, colleagues. I'd like to ask that we adjourn today in memory of Bernice May Lipshutes. Bernice was born in New York City on October seventh, nineteen twenty-nine, Tahian and Yedet Rubin. She moved to Los Angeles with her mother in nineteen forty-six and attended Fairfax High School, from which she graduated in nineteen forty-seven. In the years that followed, she worked full-time and took evening classes at Los Angeles City College. In nineteen forty-eight, she met and began to be courted by a gentleman named Ted, who later became her husband in nineteen fifty-two. Shortly after, Bernice began an over thirty-year career working with the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, where she formed many friendships and valued her relationships with coworkers. After living in several different communities in Los Angeles, Bernice and her husband settled in the San Fernando Valley, where they raised their daughters in the home that they had had, that they purchased in nineteen sixty-five. Bernice was an amazing woman, wife, mother, grandmother, daughter, sister, and friend to many. Since retiring more than thirty years ago, Bernice and Ted had spent most of their golden years traveling to places near and far, being active with their friends and temple community and spending time with their grandchildren. She was adventurous, lively, loved to talk and share her many worldly stories, and enjoyed life to the fullest. Bernice sadly passed away on April twentieth, two thousand seventeen, after a period of declining health. She will always be remembered for her devotion to her family, for her larger-than-life personality, and for her sense of style and taste. She's truly loved, will always be remembered, and missed. Bernice is survived by her daughters, Raina, Bonnie, their husbands, Mark and Maury Goldman, and her granddaughters, Josephine, Melissa, and her grandsons, Joshua and Benjamin. She was preceded in death by her husband Ted, her parents, her brother Ken, and granddaughter Samantha. May she rest in peace.
Thank you.
This is our dear friend, Maury Goldman's mother-in-law, for those of you that caught that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Buscayina?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, last month, we lost a valuable member to the Wilmington community, Raul Garcia, born in San Luis Rio, Mexico, in nineteen sixty-one, passed away on March tenth at fifty-six years old. Lived most of his life in Wilmington, as he called it Wilmington Hills. Raul was raised by his loving grandparents, Saturnino and Martina, was part of a very large family with numerous brothers and sisters, had a great sense of humor, had a passion for driving, which he made his career out of, and above all, he loved being with his daughter, Tina Marie. He fought his battle with cancer for eight months and was extremely thankful to his brother, Isaac's daughter, mother-in-law, Angelica, and their, for their loving care. Our hearts go out to Raul Garcia, his family and friends. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Buscayina, I'm still looking to my left, now I'm looking to my right. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I ask you to join me in adjourning today in memory of the legendary singer Linda Hopkins, born December the fourteenth, nineteen twenty-four, in New Orleans, Louisiana. She was rumored to be just eleven years old when she convinced Mahalia Jackson to do a benefit concert at her father's church. Miss Jackson, not realizing that she had been set up by a child, started calling her "The Kid," a nickname which stuck for the rest of her life. At the church benefit, Linda was supposed to introduce Mahalia, and instead belted out "God shall wipe away your tears." And so, and so it goes, a star was born. Her gospel style could be heard in, in church, in nightclubs, as, as well as on Broadway. In the seventies, her production of Inner City and Me and Bessie were crowd pleasers. She was a regular in Los Angeles and a favorite on Johnny Carson, and she received her Hollywood Walk of Fame star in two thousand and five. The kid, Miss Linda Hopkins, passed away on April the tenth, and she was ninety-two years old. Here in Los Angeles, we could, we couldn't let her contributions to music and theater go unrecognized. A celebration of her life will be held on Tuesday, May the second, at Second Baptist Church at one P.M. in my district. Then a repast will be held in council president, district, council district president's, uh, district, at the California Jazz Museum, Jazz and Blues Museum on Degnan Boulevard in Limer Park. Members, thank you for taking a moment with me to remember this legend. She will be greatly missed.
Thank you. I'm looking still to my right.
I'm Jane Skeeter. I'm the CEO, founder, and president of Ultra Glass. Ultra Glass Inc. is an architectural designer and manufacturer of specialty glass. We're situated in Chatsworth, in the city of Los Angeles. We're on over an acre with a twenty-five-thousand-plus-square-foot facility. Glass has properties that people don't realize. It makes it so versatile, so durable, so functional. In terms of architecture and art and engineering, glass is the perfect medium. We are really collaborators here. We work with a specifier, architect, designer, somebody who has a project, to actually enhance their work, so it makes the space feel better, look better, and function better. We recently completed a large project, our largest ever, it's a hospital in Kuwait. We did the facade, which is the area between the windows, six levels or floors of our glass. Each piece of glass had a specific spot on the building. Shipping was a real challenge on this project, as you might imagine. We had to figure out a way to ship it from our dock, in containers, through the port of L.A., through China, and all the way to Kuwait without breakage. Five thousand panels. They all survived. There's no better material to work with that satisfies my architectural love and passion for creation and designing and making things with my hands. I first got interested in stained glass and did it in my garage, started hiring people. We have staff that's been here for over thirty years. As we grow or get larger projects, we will expand, sometimes up to over forty, fifty people, and now we've gone from the garage to global, doing projects all over the world.
The first thing I tell my clients is, work with something that you have a passion for. Don't just start a business because it might make money. You've gotta have a legitimate passion.